Please rise and pledge allegiance, you have a flag over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dean Francesco?
Here.
Mr. Jerome?
Here.
Mr. Goulik?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Valeski?
Here.
Approval of meeting minutes? Recommend approval of the attached meeting minutes from June 14th and June 16th.
So move.
Chair.
Doug.
Here.
All of you.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye too. Motion passes.
There are no presentations this evening. Student address? Any student representatives? Alright. I do have a PAA representative reporting. May you play?
Good evening. I am Melissa Stafford and I am president of the Pencrest Area Education Association. I wanted to share my perspective on the latest censorship proposal from some of the politicians on the school board. Pencrest teachers, through their training and experience, have the expertise to develop age-appropriate lessons designed to teach our students both about the greatness of America and when our great nation has failed to include all Americans among the people. We teach and discuss our nation's history accurately and honestly because an American cannot achieve greatness without accuracy and accountability. Some of the politicians on board, however, are seeking to divide our community based on radical and unfounded fears of an academic boogeyman behind every history lesson. It is an attempt to cancel the facts of the history of the United States and its academic cancel culture at its very worst. This is, this attempt to divide our school district is unconstitutional government overreach by politicians who want to decide what facts are acceptable to their own narrow view. This censorship, it has no place in our district. As professionals, educators believe that all students deserve honesty in education and it is educators, not politicians or pundits, who know how to best design age-appropriate lessons for students. Thank you.
Apologize if you couldn't hear that. We do have several registered speakers. Jacob, Sagertown resident? Brent?
Oh, here.
Jacob, go ahead.
You can just stand up and just stand up.
Alright, hello everyone. My name is Jacob Barrett. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I graduated from Sagertown, back up from that auditorium back in 2016. This is actually my first time being back at Sagertown in many, many years. I just wish that I could have returned in better circumstances. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm many things, but I'm a filmmaker above all. Since graduating, I have distributed three feature films and slowly built up a name for my production company, Fame Cinema. And what many people might not know is that I was inspired to make films in the first place here at Sagertown. Growing up, I was never a part of the LGBTQ+ community, but I somewhat knew what it was like to be ostracized for being myself. I didn't like a lot of the same things that my peers did. I had dissimilar interests and different ideas about music, film, clothing, et cetera. And because of this, I was often taunted for being different. This treatment prompted me to make a short film called No Hope. For reference, it's spelled K-N-O-W. And this short film inspired Pencrest to adopt the avitam anti-bullying movement, which I think it died out by the time before our reach graduation. So what I think is interesting, thinking back to that time, is how the roles have seemed to shift slightly. You know, when I was in high school, the bullies were always kids in the classroom. But we're all here tonight trying to figure out what happens when the people who are in charge of making decisions for you are ultimately against you. I've made it abundantly clear on my social media that I am not protesting against the personal, you know, religion opinions or views of Mr. Valeski or any of the other members of the boards who have reinforced his comments regarding homosexuality being totally evil. And now most recently, his statement that racial discrimination does not exist today. I do not agree with these comments in any way, shape, or form, but that's not the point. The fact of the matter is that when you're in a position of power, you have a responsibility to the people that you govern. You should not allow those personal opinions, that religion, or those views to dictate how the people beneath you should live. And so, Mr. Valeski, I would like to, I would like for you to imagine a hypothetical scenario where you were born in a different country where, say, the religion is predominantly Buddhism, let's say. Picture yourself growing up and being told that this religion, this way of thinking is correct and that you have to abide by it even though deep down you feel that Christianity is the only way. Despite my frustration, I don't want that for you and more importantly, I don't want that for the children at Pencrest. So not experiencing discrimination for your sexual preferences, lifestyle, or your skin color doesn't mean that these issues don't exist. And I, along with the other members here today in support of the LGBTQ+ people of color, will not allow this board to continue to grace past controversial issues without proper resolution. The students come first. That accounts for all of them. Thank you.
Michael? Cambridge Springs resident?
So there's been a lot going on with certain members of the board these last few months and to Luigi, Bob, Brian, and David have got to ask, what are you afraid of? Are you afraid that having books about LGBT issues is going to turn all children gay, transgender, or even the color of the rainbow? Shouldn't you be more afraid that one of our LGBTQ students might get pistol-whipped, driven to a remote area, tied to a fence, and left to die? I mean, that is what happened to Matthew Shepard just because he was gay. Do you think open discussions about homosexuality and transgender issues in our schools will somehow be worse than that? Are you afraid that our children would grow up to be adults that could teach their own kids that being different is okay? Or do you believe that we should only accept those that feel the same way as you do or loving one another come with certain stipulations prescribed by the religion you claim to adhere to? That said, do any of you even have any friends in the LGBTQ community? Have you ever reached out to them to try and understand who they are and why? What do your actions or lack thereof say about your Christian faith? Where is the love that Christ championed? And why do you have a problem with critical race theory? Do you even know what that's about? Obviously, you believe it is teaching people to hate America. Why is that? Does studying the history of slavery as well as the Civil War teach us to look poorly on our country? What about learning about the internment of Japanese-Americans in World War II? Or how about the Tulsa massacre where whites killed hundreds of black Americans and burned their homes and businesses because a 19-year-old black boy had dared to touch a white girl? And don't forget about the Tuskegee experiment where our country deliberately infected over 400 black Americans with syphilis and then studied the untreated effects of it for almost 40 years. Where do you draw the line at what is okay to teach about our history in schools when there's so much that falls under the CRT umbrella? Why do you think that denying and distorting the effects of systemic racism on our shared history is a good thing? Heck, how can you even believe that racism isn't even an issue in this country? Finally, do the four of you believe that it's best to bury our painful and evil history while suppressing, suppressing the rights of those you may perceive as undesirable? As leaders of education, you should be pushing to expand the minds of the students you claim to support. You should all be fighting for our children to feel loved and accepted as well as understood. Instead, your verbal and political actions promote the exact opposite. You call anyone who disagrees with you socialist, liberal, or un-American. While your attacks against LGBTQ community, the, against the LGBT community and desire to hide our racist history are more akin to the beliefs of fascists and white supremacists. What makes me wonder is, what kind of America do you believe in? To the rest of the board and those who believe that we can all do better, thank you for your time.
Eli?
Hello. I'm Eli Skelton. I'm on the Board of the Trans Family of Northwest PA and a Pennsylvania Youth Commerce Advocate for Northwest PA. Tonight, I'm going to tell you why it is crucial that we implement diversity and inclusion training for all board members, school employees, and students. In order to improve my point, I need to tell you about the reason that I was bullied in high school. In my seventh grade year, I was raped by a boy that I was dating at the time. I stayed silent for a year because he made it very clear he had guns and wasn't afraid to use them. After I came forward, he confessed to the state police, who then told me that it wasn't worth taking it to court since I was dating him. Before I told anyone at school, he told everyone that I cried rape. Before I knew it, it was going around all of the junior and senior high school grade levels that I was whore, slut, hoe, et cetera. Multiple teachers knew about what was going on, including the principal, Mr. Cooper. However, nothing was being done to deal with the bullying. The bullying continued, which caused me to fall into a deep depression, self-harm, and even term suicide. School is supposed to be a safe space, but it was not for me. I knew if a school full of adults that have gone through at least one mandated reporter training couldn't handle me being bullied over something as serious as rape, there was no way that they could protect me from bullying that I would be subjected to if I came out as transgender. After I transferred to cyber school and finally felt safe enough to come out as transgender, I was cyberbullied by the same kids that I went to Cambridge Springs with. I attended a few home football games my junior and senior year and was mocked and called homophobic and transphobic slurs at all of the games. I'm not only Pencrest school, I'm Pencrest student that struggles with discrimination. For example, there is a Pencrest student who has to go to the nurse's office, which is downstairs, to use the restroom since there aren't any gender-neutral restrooms. The majority of their classes are upstairs and therefore they get in trouble for always being late to class. I'm very aware that there are many students in the district that are stuck in the closet because many of them have come out to me. They are too scared to come out because they know based on how boys that aren't gay but are feminine or too nice are called homophobic and even transphobic slurs by other classmates. Someone who isn't gay is treated like that, how would someone who is on the LGBTQ spectrum be treated? We like to assume that there aren't any bullying and discrimination issues in our schools because we have bullying programs. The hard truth is that they aren't enough since the students and adults aren't taught about diversity and inclusion. That has been made very clear by the recent actions of the board members. Instead of addressing the LGBTQ discrimination from last month, the board would rather make a motion trying to ensure that a topic that is only taught in college level 400 and 500 law students isn't taught in our case through 12 schools. We can't keep ignoring the bullying and discrimination that our LGBTQ students endure every day. And we definitely can't ignore the discrimination from adults who have to make decisions regarding our students' education and future. That is why I'm calling for discrimination and inclusion training for all board members, school employees, and students. Thank you for your time.
Last speaker is Betsy.
Hi. I'm Betsy Henning. I live in Cambridge Springs. My husband and I have lived in the Pencrest School District for 46 years. My husband Tom and I have four now adult sons who attended Cambridge Springs High School. We raised our boys in a conservative Christian church. One of our four boys is gay. Two of them are pastors. The gay son, one of the pastors, recently finished seminary and is an associate in an inclusive American Baptist church. The other is a lead pastor in a Christian and missionary alliance church, the denomination in which we raised our boys. One conservative, one progressive, makes for interesting family dynamics. We and the brothers love them both. We are a diverse and inclusive family. I'm here on behalf of LGBTQ kids and their parents because what goes on at school is often a reflection of what is going on in homes. Kids bring their parents' values, politics, and faith beliefs with them to school and often dump those values, politics, and faith beliefs on fellow students. And this dump often comes with attitude. Judging, teasing, bullying attitudes that hurt their fellow students. Students are young, they have a lot to learn, and at school they need to be taught how to share opinions without judging, teasing, and bullying. They need to learn at school, if they haven't learned at home, how to accept and live peaceably with people who are different than they are. The students in Pencrest schools, all schools, need to have training in diversity and inclusion. And clearly, from the obnoxious, rude, and offensive social media posts by one member, our school board needs training in diversity and inclusion. The worst possible reason for not training students, staff, and yourselves is saying we don't have much diversity here. Places that lack diversity, like our own community, are most likely to be populated with too many intolerant, bigoted, and prejudiced people. I don't blame them, no one taught them. They are so convinced that prejudice and racism doesn't exist, isn't a systemic problem. They can post pictures of themselves flashing white supremacy signs, all smiles. Or pictures of themselves and their family members wearing Hitler mustaches, again, all smiles. Is it just a joke? They have no idea how offensive that is, how offensive they are to people of color, Jewish people, and those who love all human beings. They disparage LGBTQ people just the same under the guise their religion allows it. Well, I know differently. It doesn't. They are misguided. They need to be taught to do better. And if it's too late for your generation, dear school board members, at least teach the next generation. Maybe they, the kids, will be the ones to bring about some decency so we can live in a community that treats everyone with respect. Maybe the next generation will eradicate racism and all manner of bigotry. Maybe, but they'll need to be taught. I just want to say that when our son came out to us, we were devastated, shocked, ashamed, and guilt-ridden. But we got ourselves educated. Over the years, my husband and I have attended gay Christian conferences and found support groups for people like ourselves. Christian parents of LGBTQ kids. I know thousands of LGBTQ Christians and I've got to tell you, their faith puts some of us to shame. God sends LGBTQ kids to Christian homes all the time. I know of six pastors from our area who have LGBTQ kids. Many of them did not do well. We all have to do better. Schools have to be a safe place because these kids who can't come out at home, they need a safe place, at least at school. We thought that having a gay child meant we failed as parents, but I can say with full conviction, having a gay child does not make you a failure as a parent, but not loving and supporting your gay child does.
Appreciate speakers this evening. We're going to start with the Athletic Committee. Mr. Goulik, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the resignation of Doug Lickards as assistant wrestling coach for Sagertown Junior Senior High School, effective July 1st.
On behalf of the committee, so move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached fall coach list and the late additions as of today, Wyatt Wright and Justin Greco.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion.
Second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Education Committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Item A, I just want to bring to everybody's attention that Act 66 was passed on June 30th by Governor Wolf. That permits students who enrolled during the 2021 school year to repeat the grade even if they pass in an effort to make up lost learning opportunities. There's information and form on the website. Item B, recommend approval of the attached teacher manual for the 21-22 school year. On behalf of the committee, so move.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of attached 21-22 student rights and responsibilities as attached. On behalf of the committee, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, recommend approval of the attached Title I, School Parent and Family Engagement Policies for our elementary schools. On behalf of the committee, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, recommend approval of attached three-year Cisco AMP for endpoints agreement. On behalf of the committee, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item F, recommend approval of attached one-year renewal for Cisco Smartnet agreement. On behalf of the committee, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item G, recommend approval of the attached Critical Race Theory Resolution. Since this motion didn't come out of committee and since critical race theory is not being taught and has never been brought up as something to add to the curriculum and since this resolution was added without allowing the public to get a public comment regarding the resolution, seems like a violation of the Sunshine Act. I make the motion to table this resolution until after the Education Committee meets on August 3rd.
I'll second then.
Motion. The motion is tabled.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
Roll call, motion to vote to table the resolution. That's what you're voting on?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dean Francesco?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Mr. Goulik?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Lynch?
No.
Mr. Valeski?
No.
Motion to table fails. I make the motion that we break into the table.
What's the move?
So you made a motion, the motion is second.
They failed.
So Mr. Johnston made the motion, now we need a second.
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 Discussion?
I think this resolution's pretty vague. We discussed last time, we need to define some of the things that we're talking about. There's no urgent need to pass this resolution, so we could take our time, determine what we're talking about. Critical race theory's pretty complex. Like when Mr. Valeski said that blacks were treated not as well as they should have been during slavery, but their treatment is different today. That's critical race theory. You're saying what it is, that there's a change in how races are defined, you know, when. So it's, we're not banning anything, we're not having a discussion about it. But when we see people flashing white power symbols and things like that, it shows that we do need to look at how we deal with racism in our district. Taking time to examine our rules of school and discussing race, racism, interpretations, worth our board's time to do it correctly, to determine what we need. We said, what is critical race theory? We got four different definitions of what it is. And this motion, there's no rush for it. And since we didn't bring it up without there being two days for the Sunshine Act, we did not allow enough time for public comment and I believe it would violate the Sunshine Act force to enact it. Our policy says you have to be on the agenda, request to be on the agenda two days before a meeting. And we brought this up on Tuesday. So you would have to ask to have been on here to speak about it. Some people did speak about it, but I don't think that's why they requested it be on the, on the agenda to speak. I think this would be a violation of the Sunshine Act and it's just, it's not that I support critical race theory, I just oppose bad resolutions.
So the question is, does this violate the Sunshine?
Just in my place? In my opinion, it does not. I would advise the board, in fact, I was going to advise the board later tonight anyway, that you mentioned earlier Act 66 was passed on June 30th. Act 65 was also passed, which actually makes as part of the Sunshine Act that you must have all the voting motions on the agenda at least 24 hours in advance so everyone knows what's going to be voted on. There's limited exceptions that wouldn't apply here. That act is effective on August 29th. It was passed on June 30th to be effective in 60 days. So that act doesn't apply this evening and the 48-hour rule per policy, I think, since it was addressed at the work session on Tuesday, applies.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
We're talking about a resolution, not a policy, right?
We're talking about a resolution tonight, right.
A resolution is not something that is binding as far as forcing anybody to win, except to recognize what the member, Mr. Johnston, expressed in his opinion with this resolution. I mean, the future board cannot actually eliminate this resolution anyway.
Agreed. Agreed.
So it's a resolution that doesn't mean anything, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Joseph, last but not the least, object to the resolution. The law of the Constitution says ten point one of the Sunshine Act, any person has the opportunity to object if they believe there is a violation of the Sunshine Act.
You want an order, sir! You want an order, sir! You want an order!
Seven, ten point one, any person has the opportunity to object if they don't allow the history for just a few thoughts or try to escape here.
Let me, let me, let me address it. Section seven, seven, ten point one of the Sunshine Act does allow members of the public to speak on matters and motions to come before the board, before the vote. That's correct.
Yes.
That, that's what you're referring to?
It has to give people a reasonable opportunity to speak before official action is taken.
Correct.
A reasonable opportunity could not occur here because we desire to sign up to speak before this resolution is proposed.
People in the public to, to...
What are you afraid of?
I'm not afraid not, this is the order that has to be followed.
Mr. Joseph, I've made my point to you, Mr. Joseph. I'll, I'll sit down now, I just want you to be aware that I do believe it's a violation and I will be pursuing action in court.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
Before making my remarks, Mr. Joseph, would you please explain this individuals, the public and board members, the specific statement that can be discussed under the Sunshine law?
Can you repeat?
The specific statement that we allow to discuss in the Sunshine law?
Not sure I understand.
I think one of the, one of the concerns is our board, for everyone's benefit to re-educate, our board policy says that speakers can sign up two days before. So you have to sign up two days before. Because our board meeting was on a Wednesday, you know...
Because our board meeting was on Wednesday, you know, the work session was Tuesday, we typically have it Monday, but because of the holiday, it was on Tuesday, and by the time the agenda was public, you know, it was Wednesday before about noon, so there wasn't two full days of notice of what was on the agenda to vote, as that was not on the work session agenda.
I think the board member that they need to know what the items, the law says, we can discuss under the Sunshine law, and whatever this gentleman says, you know, I don't think it's part of it.
I don't know the gentleman, he was referring to Section 7, 10.1A and C, I believe, of the Sunshine Act. Subsection A says, "Except as provided in subsection B," which I'll get to. "The Board or Council of Political Subdivision," that includes the Board, "created by," excuse me, "shall provide a reasonable opportunity at each advertised regular meeting and advertised special meeting for residents of the political subdivision," I'm skipping some parts that aren't relevant at all, "to comment on matters of public concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the Board prior to taking official action." That's why you have your public comment at the beginning of the board meeting before action items. Continuing, if the Board determines there's not sufficient time, you can defer comment to the next regular meeting, which doesn't really apply here. Subsection C, which the gentleman also referred to, "Any person has the right to raise an objection at any time to a perceived violation of this chapter at any meeting or Board," which is the objection that the gentleman is raising, that he believes that there's a violation. The issue here is the notice for getting on the Board, meaning agenda. Under our Board policy, you must sign up...
Mr. DeFranchesco?
He's answering your question.
The law is specific which items we are supposed to discuss on the Sunshine.
Mr. DeFranchesco?
Is he answering your question?
Hey Luigi, I would really like to finish hearing what he has to say, please. Give him a minute to finish what he was saying, I want to hear it. Thank you.
Our Board policy requires persons who wish to speak to sign up two days in advance. As Dr. Glasspool has mentioned, because our work session was Tuesday due to the July 4th holiday instead of Monday, the agenda was prepared after the work session, and this item was added at the work session, suggesting that that's not two, I guess the suggestion is that it's not two days in advance, and the persons who signed up had to sign up before the agenda. Was that what was published, is that correct?
In theory, yes.
In reality, yes. If that's the case, I think the real issue is anyone who wishes to speak to a matter, either we've got to waive the 24, the two days, or you've got to wait until we give that opportunity. My question would be to the fourth second C, did anybody ask to be added to the agenda within the last 36 hours?
Yes. We had a couple that came in yesterday.
My question, and I respect most, because some people are accusing this Board that we violate the Sunshine law. Is it true or not that the items we're supposed to discuss during the Sunshine law is personnel items?
Oh, okay.
Property rights, appropriate sale of properties?
Yeah. I can cover that for you, hang on a second. I'm gonna...
I just think we're talking about two different sections of the school code.
Yeah. The Sunshine Act gives the Board the authority, and I'm sorry, I want to get this up in front Section 708 of the school code authorizes the Board to discuss the following items in an executive session. To discuss any matter involving the employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of performance, promotion or disciplining of any specific prospective public officer or employee, or current public officer or employee employed or appointed by the agency. Includes former public officer or employee, I'm not going to read the whole thing, that's what we generally call personnel. Number two, to hold information, strategy, negotiation sessions relating to arbitration or collective bargaining, labor negotiations. Number three is to consider the purchase or lease of real estate up until the time of an option purchase or lease, that's the real estate exception. Number four, to consult with the attorney, advisor regarding information or strategy in connection with litigation or other issues on which identifiable complaints are expected to be filed. You don't have to talk to me about litigation strategy in the public, because that can undermine the litigation. Number five, to review or discuss agency business which if conducted in public would violate a lawful privilege. Generally speaking, those are things like student matters, where student records and those types of things are confidential. Includes quasi-judicial deliberations, so when you have those types of hearings. There's another separate provision that was added to discuss plans or review records that are deemed necessary for emergency preparedness, protection of public safety and security.
In your opinion, sir, do you feel that the Board violated that, those points?
We discussed the Critical Race Theory Resolution at the work session on Tuesday. The issue, and as I, as my thinking is evolving on this, since it was Tuesday, and since the agenda was prepared after the deadline for people to sign up, I think you have two choices, or two options to choose from here. One is to waive the two-day requirement and allow people to comment, or two, to delay the vote on the motion and allow people to sign up and make public comment before you vote.
Which we did discuss it on Monday, during the meeting, correct?
But timeout isn't number one a moot point, because we're here to vote on it, and number two, we just had to vote to table it and it failed, so either of those two options are not really options, right?
Well, actually, Mr. Goulik, I'm going to speak up here. I am against CRT, we can argue that as a mistake, but I have to agree with the motion to table it now. I don't have a way to do this, but in all fairness, we did not have the two days, and something else somebody said about this can be overturned at any point by the Board. I think we need to sit down, if we're going to do something like this, A, I have to define, we can talk about that at a time, but we need to do this professionally, we have to do it right. I see the problems that's going on around the country, and we have to take care of them, we have to handle this, but I also, let's do it right so we have no backlash.
Didn't you just vote against table it?
I did, but I learned something. I'm not too ignorant to say, I did not know that, and I learned something. I'm not that proud, George taught me something, and I was wrong. So, but I don't know how to go around fixing this.
George, is there a way to table it after fail's vote against?
Yes. Let me, let me...
But if we vote against it, we'll bring it back.
Hang on a second, I'll tell you.
And I'll have to fold back.
To answer Mr. Brown's question first, if I may.
Yeah, please.
Robert's rules provides what's called a motion to reconsider. It's a motion that has high privilege, it can be moved by anyone who voted with the prevailing side, and it's in order at the same meeting or during the next succeeding legislative day after the vote was taken. So even if, even if you voted to table, you have the ability to reconsider that motion during the same meeting or the next meeting by a motion of a person who voted with the side that prevailed. Does that answer your question?
Well, we want to...
So one of the people that voted no would have to make the motion?
Correct.
And then, anyone can second it?
Let me see.
I'm trying hard not to get us in trouble.
It requires a second. I would also note, just for everyone's information, no question can be reconsidered twice. But to Mr. Brooks's question, anybody can second it.
We're going through a discussion of the motion that's already on the floor, so I don't know what we're going to do.
We just explained it, Tim.
The motion to reconsider is a highly privileged motion, it can interrupt a debate on the main motion.
Can interrupt the motion from the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
So, a motion to table?
Reconsider?
Reconsider.
Reconsider the motion to table.
Reconsider the motion to table.
I'll second.
Would like to second that one.
I think we have a second. That motion is debatable.
Any discussion?
Discussion, yes. I don't understand what the problem is right now, you know, we're going through, I got a vote, please.
Don't know. You need to calm down.
Okay. I don't know what the vote was before, but anyway, you got the right, and you see it, okay, that's what we're going to talk about, the motion that was originally on the floor. Why you people are so worried about, why is anybody here worried about, voting for something that's a very integral part of our lives? Let me read this to you, okay? During Grade VII through XII inclusive, there shall be included at least four semesters of equivalent study in the history of the government of the portion of America which has become the United States of America, and the end of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, of such nature, kinds or equality, as to have for its purpose the development, teaching, and presentation of the principles and ideals of the American republican representative form of government, as portrayed and experienced by the acts and policies of the framers of the Declaration of Independence, and framers of the Constitution of the United States and the Bill of Rights. The study of the history of the United States, including the study of the Constitution of the United States and the study of the history and constitution of this Commonwealth, shall also be such as will emphasize the good, worthwhile, and best features and points of the social, economic, and cultural development abroad of the American family life, and includes everybody. High standards of living in the United States, the privilege enjoyed by such citizens, they heritage and inheritance derivations of and in a principle of government. Such instruction shall, and Mr. Joseph can explain what shall means, have for its purpose also the instilling into every boy and girl who comes out of our public, private, and parochial school the solemn duty and obligation to exercise intelligently the voting privileges and to understand the advantages of American republican form of government, as compared with various other forms of government. Now you wonder, where does this come from? And I'll tell you where it comes from. It's a 24 public Pennsylvania, PS, whatever it stands for, Pennsylvania statute.
It was a codified version.
16-16.5. This is the law in Pennsylvania, and the critical race theory is contrary to this law. They want to teach the opposite. They want, they force the Board eventually, not now, but eventually, contrary what the law says that we're supposed to teach our kids. Now, if that's what you want... And here, board members, it's up to you to decide what you want, the future of our children is going to be. You want to, the one that killed the motion that Mr. Justice came up with, it's up to you. But just remember who you are and who you represent.
So to clarify, we're voting on reconsidering tableing the motion, not for the race theory, right?
Luigi, you missed, you apparently didn't hear anything I said a few minutes ago. I agree with most of Luigi's. I am against CRT, but if we're going to make a motion, if we're going to put something into policy, I want to make sure it's ironclad and done right. This gentleman back here made some points, I'm not a large lawyer, do not claim to be, I'm not sure what could happen with that, but if we wait till August, we can cover our bases, make sure everything's worded properly, make sure everything's taken care of, and that way, we don't have to go back and say, oh, we should have done it this way, we should have done it that way, there was no action like this. My point is, let's do it right. We do things...
This is a start.
I understand, but why start? Let's finish it properly. If we're going to do it, I'm tired of starting something and then we move on. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, just like our curriculum and everything else, I've been pushing. If we're going to do it, let's do it the right way, so we don't have to go back and revisit it. That's what I'm tired of doing. We do too much of that on this board, we're making great strides, I don't want to stop now. If we have to wait a couple of weeks, wait a couple of weeks. That's all I'm saying. What George told me made sense to me. I don't want to go back and say, okay, we have to change it because this gentleman took us to court, we have to do this. No, we're not doing that. Let's do it in August, make sure we have our ducks in a row, make sure we answer the questions the Board needs answered, and then move on.
Can I ask you to amend your thing to include this in the August meeting?
Sorry, what's that?
Can I ask you to amend your motion to table to include this in the August meeting?
The motion that I made was, I made the motion to table this resolution until after the Education Committee meets on August 3rd. So we'll be on August 3rd in the Education Committee, and the board meeting is on August 19th?
Yes, voting meeting, yes.
The voting meeting's on the 19th, so since this has come out of the Education Committee, we have a scheduled meeting on August 3rd, we can discuss it then. If we want to make it a policy instead of a resolution, we can do that.
That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, Luigi. I'd rather see us, we're going to do this, I'd rather see something in policy to back this up.
And it's fine, like, the policy will be after August 3rd, too.
But I agree with you, this is the first step, because...
Let's just do it in August.
I disagree on this resolution, what's this to try to create a policy?
My turn. My turn, okay?
We're not, move on.
You talked about this before, I'm sorry, I got to...
Please, it's all you...
CRT right now is a hot topic. I'm not sure that what you're talking about and CRT are definitely exactly the same thing, and I think we need to have more conversation about it. You asked, when you stated earlier, Luigi, you said, what are we, what are we afraid of? I'm going to tell you what I'm afraid of, as a board member. I'm afraid, like Mr. Brown said, that once again, we're rushing into something that we're going to look back at and say, oh, well, shoot, we didn't give that enough thought. I'm afraid as a mother with children in our schools, that I'm going to rush into something, that my kids are going to come home with lessons later, and I'm going to look like a real moron when I complain about what they're learning after I vote. I'm also afraid, I've had people ask, but what are my qualifications to be on the Board? My qualifications, what I've, zero. I don't have any, any training to be on the Board other than Board training, but my heart and soul... and soul is for this district. And my heart and soul is for the members of this community, and if they don't have a chance to speak when they elected us to be here, then we don't have a right to be voting. That's how I feel. So if you're asking what I'm afraid of, that's what I'm afraid of, and that's why I think we need to table it. We need to know what we're voting for, to make sure we're doing it right the first time, and not coming back to it later. We don't have time for that.
Yep.
Yes.
That meeting night we talked about, you had it scheduled for Thursday, and I told you that's a problem, are we backing that date up for August?
Oh, Luigi, right now.
It's our Thursday.
It's Thursday before the, the fair. I know that it's, it's the week right before the fair. I know that a lot of people are, are busy with, with the fair and, and the events surrounding it. You wanna move it up a week?
Yep.
So you wanna move it back to the second week? I can, I can do that.
Ninth and the twelfth?
Would we need to, uh?
I would, we'd have to re-advertise it, but.
But then, oh, the thirteenth being changed, right?
It's the third.
Oh, the third.
Uh, we could make it the ninth and the twelfth.
And then, if we have extra personnel, schedule another voting meeting for later, if needed?
Right, we did that last year, we had a special voting meeting to.
For personnel?
Yeah. We did that like two days before.
Yeah, I love being the, the three.
I love the paychecks, I mean, come on.
You make more than me.
I'll have it.
There's no pay.
I can't do that right now. I wouldn't.
So, what I'm gonna do is, typically, our committee meetings are closed to the committee in three people. Mr. Who's the chair of that committee? Jeff, is it okay if I open that up to the public?
Yeah.
So what we'll do is, we'll re-advertise that education committee meeting as well as the, the change of the August ninth and the August twelfth. And I'm gonna apologize to everybody here, I didn't realize you'd all be facing the sun. Additionally, I don't like the heat as much as anybody. We're gonna most likely move our meetings through the end of the year to Cambridge Springs High School. I believe they have the best air conditioning, so I'll make sure that we get all of those changes out to the public in a variety of ways. I know we, I have a little bit of a diatribe, I apologize. So where are we right now, Mr. Brown?
I was, we'd offered to explain where we are. We have a motion on the floor to reconsider the decision, the, uh, to, uh, the decision that was to not table. So there's possibly two motions here. The motion to reconsider, the vote required is majority. If you vote to reconsider, you bring back the motion to table, and then you'll have a second vote on the motion to table. If the motion for reconsideration fails, then you're done. Okay?
Okay.
Everybody got that?
Vote to reconsider, and then we either vote to table if, if that went, or then we vote on the CRT resolution if reconsider failed.
Yes, correct.
All right.
Okay, so right now, we're gonna vote on the motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
I made the motion to reconsider.
And the, the motion was seconded.
Yeah.
Brian.
Okay, so now we're gonna roll.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Oh.
Mr. Giraud?
Yes.
Mr. Goulet?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Valeski?
Yes.
The motion to reconsider prevails. So now, you come back and vote on tabling it to the date certain.
Till after August third.
So that's the motion on the floor.
So we're tabled till the August third?
I said after August third, that's when the education meeting, it doesn't matter, we're not gonna vote till.
Well, no, no, just a discussion.
Yeah.
August third is when we're gonna discuss it.
Yes.
The, whatever date that is, okay.
Roll call.
Do we have, do we have a motion motion?
No, we haven't made a motion.
No, 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 you brought back the motion and failed. So that motion is now again on the table.
Okay, roll call.
Wow, you guys are try, trying my parliamentary. I'm telling you.
You are earning your paycheck tonight. This is the vote on the motion.
This is the vote on the motion to table, Scott.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. D. Francesco?
No.
Mr. Giraud?
Yes.
Mr. Goulet?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Valeski?
Yes.
Just like a dinner show.
Thank you. Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston, chairman. Item A, just wanna report that the GISA project at the Maplewood campus is on track to open the start of school. We had a more in-depth presentation or update on Tuesday. Item B, recommend approval of the attached exemplar public service resolution recognition of Senator Brooks, Representative Roy, and Representative Rapp.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Finance Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached treasures reports.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached dispersments.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two depositories for the Pencrest School District as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two depositories for the Pencrest School District as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item D, recommend approval for the solicitor to seek trademark status for the Pencrest School District logo.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have always heard trademarking is very expensive. Do you have a ballpark?
Eleven hundred dollars.
Oh, that's not.
It's, uh, the bottom piece three fifty, and the, and the workload is seventy.
Okay, I thought it was much more than, not that that's cheap, but.
I thought you might ask, so I was.
Any other discussion?
I'll donate this week's paycheck.
I think it's over time.
All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
Opposed, motion passes.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Item A, recommend approval to set the board's secretary stipend at four thousand dollars per annum for the approved for your term.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval to employ the following instructional staff effective August thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval to employ Cassidy Cravick as a long-term substitute math teacher for the twenty-one, two school year at SHS, level masters, level one.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Second. All those in, or any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Uh, item D, recommend approval of the following non-instructional transfers.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item E, recommend approval of the following non-instructional staff to serve as aides for the E S Y program at their hourly rate.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Item F, recommend approval to adjust the salary of Matthew Trippis to ninety percent year two of his stated salary in accordance with the support for President compensation plan, section D dot C, retroactive to his higher date.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Policy Committee, Mr. D. Francesco, chairman. Item A, recommend, recommend approval of the attached policy eight sixteen, district social media.
I'm moved to accept the recommendation on committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
School Safety Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached twenty-one, twenty-two health and safety plan.
On behalf of the committee, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Crawford County Career and Technology Center report, Mr. Johnson, representative, very important this evening.
Uh, there was no meeting this month, like, eh, this month's last meeting, because it was right before our board meeting, so they, they're skipping the July meeting, so there's no report this month.
Thank you. Uh, P S P A report, Mr. Goulet, representative. I skipped Mr. Brooks. Thank you. Uh, I U five report, Mr. Brooks.
Um, a lot of discussion about upcoming laws that have been passed or not passed. The summer food program's in full swing, operating in forty-three sites. The emergency connectivity fund, seven point one seven billion. Window opens on June twenty-ninth. Federal state programs are awarded sixteen thousand dollar grant for the summer food program. Um, and the fast back for the month, seven hundred nine billion is the projected current expenditure for public elementary and secondary schools.
Seven nine two?
Seven hundred nine billion. Thank you. New business?
Uh, with, with.
Wow. I'm nervous. Well, it's a period, we don't really have any students who graduated this year, but uh, first off, I see all the summer sports going on, and it's awesome to see the kids out playing, uh, team traveling to the ball club and everything, it's, uh, enjoyable to see that. Football students and teachers have a safe summer, and, uh, I just, one question I have with the L G B T, uh, everything going on, I don't follow social media anymore, my life is still a lot, let me say, I don't. But the one thing that everybody kept bringing up the entire time was about bullying, and I agree, it's a problem, I mean, when I was in school, not just what, what your sexuality is, but there was always. I guess my question is to the teachers and administrators and, and fellow, and the students, and, uh, if bullying's a problem, and we have policies in place to, to, to address that, then something tells me that the teachers, the principals, and administrators are failing in that aspect, and I guess my question to everybody is why? That's not the school board's problem, that bullying is being, has taken place. We're not in the schools, nor will we be in the schools. We set policies, and if people aren't adhering to the policy, we have a personnel issue, and I think that's something the board maybe need to start addressing that part. Uh, I don't know what else the board is supposed to do about bullying. Uh, we can make more policies, but apparently the policies we have in place aren't being adhered to. So my question is, I understand the students spoke, and, trust me, I don't care what your faith, your sexuality, whatever, as a student in this district, I take it personally. You are my responsibility. But in the same token, we make the policies. I will always be here for you, and so I'm speaking for me, I can't speak for any other board. But if we don't know this is a problem, how do we address it? I, I guess I'm just at odds. Uh, the last month, we listened to two hours or so, two and a half hours of comments, and tonight we listened to twenty minutes of comments, but it always come back to bullying. So I'm gonna put it on the teachers and the, and the principals of this district, what the hell are you doing? Why is bullying such a problem? People need to speak up. We gotta know this, I mean, we can't make a solution, but I've been hearing the same problem over and over, and this isn't the first one. So I have a problem with that. Uh, like I said, uh, the students do come first. I've heard a few people say that, we don't care about students. I care. You may not like, I'm not here to be friends with anyone. I don't care if you like me or not, the students do come first. If you're not on your job, my mission is to make either, you're gonna do your job, you're gonna do other jobs.
Tim, I'm gonna have, uh, principals come to the education committee meeting, talk about what we do with bullying, and I'll try to, I'm gonna try to condense it to five, ten minutes. I know it's not, not our purpose, but since we were talking about it, I'm gonna bring it up.
Well, we've been hearing this bullying issue for, since I've been on the board, and apparently it just continued to get worse. We have made policies. That's not the board, I mean, we can't police, that's not our job. We don't get paid to police. All right, well, I wanted to wish our seniors good luck, and welcome our freshmen next year, hopefully, the year will be a little bit easier for them than it was for the last two years. Also, I wanna thank our seniors enlisted, hope they have a career in the military. I'm safe, good on you. That's all I have to say.
I don't have too much to add tonight, to be honest. At the June meeting, I was going to give some public comments concerning the L G B T agenda in our schools. I don't think at this point I need to say much more, because I think I've made myself clear that, um, in my beliefs, um, I've never claimed to hate anyone at all. I disagree with the lifestyle, and I don't believe that sexuality should be part of our education in the public school. I think I've made myself clear enough, that's all I have to say tonight.
I would just like to thank those who have taken the time to come out and address the board, to show your support, anyone, whatever side you support, um, on these issues. I left the meeting last month disappointed in the way it ended, but we had a lot of really, um, respectful comments from a lot of people in our community. Whether you agree or disagree, um, presenting yourselves respectfully, and I think that's what's important with the board, and I think that's what we need to be teaching our students, is respect. We don't need to agree with one another, but we need to respect one another. I think that's really what it comes down to. I think we have a responsibility with these upcoming topics to be proactive without being paranoid. There's a fine line there sometimes, but I think sometimes the line gets a little skewed. And I just, uh, for those students who have come to visit us tonight, whether you've been gone a few years, or one or two, I have a lot of respect for you to, to speak up. My heart was broken in two hearing your stories. Nobody in our district should suffer what these children have suffered, young adults at this point, but, um, and I have to, to agree with what Tim said. If it is happening, and I, I believe that it is, we set policy, we cannot police what's going on in the schools. I think Dr. Glasspool has been doing a great job, um, since he's come on, onto our administration, getting a lot of things taken care of that have been left to the wayside, but I think we have a, a lot of work to do, and it falls on our teachers and our administration to not just say they're going to follow. And it falls on our teachers and our administration to not just say they're going to follow through, but we have policies in place, we have rules in place, we have handbooks, we have guidelines. And if a student needs help and support, they should be proceeding. So we need to make sure that that's what it needs to happen. Thank you all for your time. Keep coming out, not just when there's big issues either. It's nice to see the community support.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. We respect both sides of the aisle. I would tell you that I have several family members that are part of the LGBTQ community, and I don't condemn them, I don't condemn any of you. We're supposed to love everybody. And I don't think this critical race theory is part of that, and we'll discuss that later. I am very familiar with the bullying, because I have a granddaughter that used to attend this school, who was black, and for the last three years was bullied for her color. And there was no outrage from any member on the board during that three years when I brought them issues to light. And some of them was even from teachers. And it just pisses me off to know it. We need to work together as a community and love each other and not fight against. If we knew what was going on, we could direct the administration. But when we don't know, there's nothing we can do about it.
Like I said, the teachers and the principal knew about it.
But the principal failed on his job.
Exactly.
And that's gonna fall back on him, and we're gonna work on that. We have zero tolerance for bullying in this school, period. And I think every board member will tell you the same thing. These kids are our future. They deserve equal treatment, doesn't matter who they are. They deserve to be able to get a fair and safe education, and that's the job of this board. We don't know what's happening, and we can't do anything about it. So, thank you.
Congratulations to all the students, staff, and parents and administration for making it through the most, most up and down year I think that Pancras has ever had. Good luck to all our graduates. I hope that you take what you learned here and work to make your own American dream come true with that. Congratulations to all our sports teams, especially the spring sports, they had their first season in two years. Congratulations to Cambridge Springs High School for their girls' season of domination with District Ten titles in soccer, basketball, and softball. And congratulations on our local trap clubs, who did spectacular at states this year. We have a lot of real work to do as a district to get ready for next year. We just came through this mangled mess of a pandemic, as well as any district could. We were open more than most districts. We listened to the people, and we did a great job getting through this, in my opinion. We have a lot of work to do to improve our schools, for our students, and our community. So I keep getting baffled, this divide. The board feels the need to provide additional distractions to the work of our administration and to add additional cost to taxpayers by making discriminatory statements, rack up write-to-no costs, rack up legal fees. We can't complain about the spending being so high and then add frivolous spending by the board, because they feel that it, to have some hot take on something. Our administration, our staff only have so much time. As a board, we need to value that time to address the, the bigoted and discriminatory issues we had last month on social media. We as a district hired someone to work for us. They stole time from us, time from taxpayers, to make a post on social media that they said spread hatred. They said, I'm a hater, I own that. They admitted the purpose of the post was to spread hate. Others in the district, not just the board, shared that hate, filled the post. Board members shared the post, and that's fine, you can share hate if you want. Before COVID, one out of ten of our students suffered from anxiety. Since COVID, it's one out of four people. We're adding to the hate and the anxiety by making statements like this. People representing the students that the hate was directed at shared that hate, and it was embarrassing to me. Our students know that it's okay to be heterosexual. They need also know it's okay if they're not. I oppose the view that we should discriminate by not allowing LGBTQ clubs to meet on school grounds. It's a school's role to teach everyone it's okay for them to be who they are, and it's okay for other people to be who they are. It is a Christian view to oppose homosexuality, but it's not the Christian view. There's many Christian views that support homosexuality as well. It's not a battle against Christianity, it's a battle against bigotry and homophobia. It's a battle for our students to be protected, as outlined in all the policies that we talk about, where we're not gonna discriminate against kids. That's what we need to be focusing on. We need to do more, if it's training for staff or administration, students. You know, all of our teachers need to be allies to all of our students. We need to be a community that comes together for all of our students, not just for a politician. I see the community members speaking for our kids, and I see them trembling, I see them holding back tears, because here at Pancras, we accept bigotry, racism, and homophobia too easily. That's not to say everyone is racist, not to say everyone is bigoted, but we need to not make it socially acceptable to say these things and feel this way. So add on to some of the things board members have said. If your student is being bullied, report it. Parents, hold us accountable, hold the board accountable, hold the teachers, hold the administration. If you're being discriminated against, report that, follow the procedures that we have. We can do what we can do, but we need everyone else to do what they can do as well, so that we can take action. Thank you.
Better do that for me, too. Yeah, just to, just to build on, he said, there was, there was a Christian minister that wrote a very, very nice letter in the paper about diversity.
Yes.
And and it was, it was very touching, it was all about diversity, and we should include everybody, we shouldn't hate, we shouldn't judge. And she's a Christian minister, so again, when he said it's not everything. I mean, you can't call something evil and then say you don't hate. I mean, that's just talking on both sides of your mouth again. I wanna touch on what Tim talked about. I taught fifth grade for seventeen, eighteen years. Bullies are sneaky. They pick on the weakest of the weak. And many, many, many times, the vast majority of times, the targets of the bullies will not come forward. They won't say anything, they'll quietly take it. So you can't fix something when you don't know there's a problem. And that is, is a big, a big part of it. Yeah, I know, some administrators have dropped the ball, some teachers have dropped the ball. Somebody came to me and said, he's picking on me. We stopped everything when we got it settled. But unfortunately, so many victims, so many targets, will not come forward and talk about it or tell anybody. And they need to do that, okay? It's, it's on them. They need to do that, they can't be afraid, although I understand that's easy to say, but they have to come forward and talk about it. Earlier, my last point earlier, a lot of people that spoke tonight talked about the school board needing diversity training. I was offended by that. The school board doesn't need diversity training. Some people on the school board need diversity training. I don't, I can tell you who does, and I can tell you who doesn't, but I don't. So don't lump everybody in the same category because it's just not right. And with that, have a nice rest of the summer. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'm the last one, I just reached my legs anyway. Well, from what I heard, from the people that spoke today, and some board members, it's a lot of issues came up. I'm not gonna, here to defend Mr. Valles, because he already told you what, why he did that. But what I'm here to, to discuss about the LGTvs? Is this. Nobody, nobody raised the issue about discrimination, bigotry. I did not accuse anybody of it. I didn't, you know, anybody accusing anything, except one member. That one. He's who, he, he's the person who started and kept going and going, and it is going today, tonight. Mr. Valles committed a remark, and he did it in response to a photographer that took the picture. He made a nasty remark that I do not agree with. He did make the, but Mr. Brooks canceled, oh, oh. He blocked out the name of the individual and left Mr. Valles on top. And everybody assumed that Mr. Valles made that comment. No, he did not. Okay? Discrimination is BS. There is no systematic discrimination, and any nobody on this board who ever made any comments about homosexuality and all their, and LGBTs, no one. Okay? And I don't understand why you people, so many people are convinced that they are biggest, biggest on this board. Okay? That's one issue, the discrimination does not exist. Now, going back to the, as you go back to the history of the critical race, race theory. This is, this remark from, it's, it's unclear whether the NEA, that's the National Educational Association, is encouraging members, it states they have already placed anti, anti critical race theory legislation to violate the law. A better list is, is argument that the teachers should gloss over unpleasant aspects of American history. And I will make a statement about American history. According to the Union adopted statement, the theory, now pay attention to this, virally divided communities across the country teaches, teaches that racism is an integral part of the United States system, an institution that purposely disavails people of color. The Union States, Congress, nine states have already banned, banned instruction that references structural racism, white supremacy, and other key principles of the theory. Now, giving example of the results of this COT, Critical Race Theory. This is statement made by, in a thirty-fourth of July Facebook poster, Utah Black Lives Matter charged charter declared that the American flag, the American flag that you people took a note in later today, tonight. But Utah Black Lives Matter charter declared that the American flag, symbol of hatred. The American flag is symbol of hatred. When black Americans see this flag, we know the person flying is a racist. Okay? Now what? You can piss this around if you have the guts. This is a, this is an example. This is an example of what they think is discriminatory.
Are you gonna tell them what the source is that you're finding this information?
Source.
What?
So in other words, anybody that paints religious to the flag, their flag, it gets around to wave the flags, to make a flag, because they are proud to be Americans, they're racist. That's really what, everything boils down to. They wanna teach our young kids in school to have their own country.
Who's that?
They, people, people that push the critical race theory.
Who are they?
Who are they? Now, you know who they are. The critical race theory is sponsored and pushed by left-wing individuals. Most of, most of them are communists and socialists. And the less favorite, you're socialist?
No, I'm left-wing, but I'm not political or socialist.
Good. But most of them are socialist, they're communists, they're pushing it because they want to destroy the country. Now, you tell me why, and all natural born Americans has to decide to destroy their own country. And here I am, and, and that, I'm an immigrant. Yes, I do have many years as a, as a, as a United States citizen than most of the people over here. But I'm an immigrant, I know that what's at stake if we destroy our country, our country. And going back to history, the history in this country has already taken care of the problem that some of you accused the United States of doing. Abraham Lincoln, he, he cost his life. He gave up his life to fight to free the slaves and make everything right for those people. And not only he thought he gave up his life, but we got about half, half a million Americans that gave up their life during the Civil War, so that the black Americans and all that, and everybody else, stopped, would destroy the slavery. And they succeeded. Yeah, you wrote that down, Abraham Lincoln was the, was the individual who started the whole thing to free the slaves. And he cost his life. So history is there already. And to think that Americans, they will resolve the problems of discrimination is bull. And I'd like to know, these people that they think that we discriminate against anybody. I don't know if any of you experienced in the workplace, especially in the government agencies, what is called affirmative action. Affirmative action was started back in, during the Nixon presidency. Nixon wanted to, had a desire to, to remove something that was against blacks. Blacks were not allowed to work in a federal government, and Nixon started, put a stop to it. And that's when the affirmative action started. Now, what do affirmative actions do? There wasn't a, a one answer to resolve the problem of the past. And nowadays, we have blacks, Hispanics, and even women that got more rights than a white American.
I'm sorry.
They got more rights. Because right now, and I can tell from experience, how many people was the, the, the promotion of gender in government? And I write, that's discrimination too. How many cases there was, that came up before the Supreme Court about reverse discrimination? But nobody cares. Why? Because it's a political, there's politicians that they take advantage to divide our, our people and put it one against the other. And this has to stop. And they, they're introducing
Let's wrap it up.
Introducing the critical race theory for the purpose to divide each one of us and go against each other.
Ten minutes.
And to that, I have said enough. We'll take it up.
We have, we motion. Can I say aye? Oh, we have executive, executive session on July sixth and eight for personnel. Now we got.
Motion to adjourn. So move.
When do we need to sign up to speak at the next meeting, just so I'm?
James Pryor.